Everyone ready? We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. Before we jump into an agenda, we have got to swear in a new member. Mr. Ibis, if you would be so kind.
Sure. If you can just stand with your right hand and just repeat after me, all right? I, John Hanson, I, John Hanson, do solemnly swear, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. I support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota. Constitution of the State of Minnesota. And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of Planning Commissioner. Sure. That I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Planning Commissioner in the city of Casson. That I will discharge. One more time. That I will discharge. That I will discharge. Faithfully the duties of Planning Commissioner. Faithfully the duties of Planning Commissioner. In the city of Casson. The city of Casson. State of Minnesota. State of Minnesota. To the best of my judgment ability. To the best of my judgment ability. All right. Congratulations. Thanks.
Thank you. We also need to elect a chairperson. For what it is worth, I am happy to continue on. If somebody else would like to assume the role, I am also more than happy to entertain someone else's interest.
Go ahead.
Do we go through the normal voting process? Somebody needs to make a motion?
I'd say you do it three times for nominations. If there's no one else, then, you know, you just nominate yourself already, so, you know.
That's a bit self-serving. I don't want it to come across that way.
Well, then, maybe we should have somebody else nominate someone. He's looking for someone to nominate.
Oh, I will nominate Tom.
We have a nomination. Do we have a second?
A second.
A nomination, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. I will continue on.
I mean, you got it down.
Wow.
Enough how to work the recording device now pretty well. You got it.
Took about a year to get that under my belt. First item this evening, review and approval of the minutes from the prior meeting. If anybody has any additions or corrections, if they'd be kind enough to provide them. Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve the minutes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That takes care of our minutes. Next item this evening, we've got a public hearing. We're looking for a variance for Mr. Marty.
Yeah, so Mike Marty here has requested a variance so that he can build an addition on his building at 713th Street Southeast in the East Creek Commercial Edition. Now, he says that when the building was built back in 2002, there's a sanitary sewer easement that runs diagonally through the property. And because of that easement, the building was already placed as far back as it could on the property without being in the way of that easement. And now he would like to add an addition to the south half of the building. He originally requested a 25-foot addition, which, according to the zoning and the setbacks of 30 feet from the front yard, that would mean a variance of five feet that he is requesting. But since the public hearing was established, Mr. Marty has requested that gets bumped up to six feet of a variance instead, just because of the building, the builder was having some difficulty with the interior design work. But with that, there are six different criteria that the Planning Commission has to consider for variances. I'll just read those. Number one, whether or not exceptional, unique, or extraordinary circumstances apply to the physical surrounding shape or topographic conditions of the parcel of land that result in practical difficulties for the owner. Two, whether or not the variance requested will alter the essential character of the locality. Three, whether or not granting the variance requested will impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property, substantially increase congestion in adjacent public streets, endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the vicinity. Four, whether the variance requested is the minimum variance that would alleviate the practical difficulties. Five, whether or not the variance requested is consistent with the intent of this chapter in the city's comprehensive plan. And six, whether or not the variance requested provides for a reasonable and practical solution that eliminates the practical difficulties. So with all of those points of consideration and the finding of facts, find that this request for a variance is consistent with those points of consideration. It's the staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission recommends approval to council.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions before we open up the public hearing?
So the proposed addition is would not be within the drainage and utility easement?
No.
And that, according to this, looks like that's 33 feet wide? So the actual setback from the property line is 33. Are we asking a setback of 24 instead of 30?
It would be, the setback would be 26 instead of 30.
26, okay. 24.
Sorry, 24.
The building is 26.
Lot of numbers there.
Yeah, lots of numbers.
So the actual setback from the property line, that would be 57 feet? If I add those two together?
No, no, the setback would be 24 from the street. So I think, Ian, when you found, when you were researching that, the way it's classified, as far as I know, with that drainage easement, it's actually kind of the road now. Isn't that right, Ian?
Oh, is it?
Oh, yes, that's right.
I think that's what he's referring to. And that was a little confusing when we looked at the original plat map. It was like, well, what is, where is this 33-foot? But it's 33 and 33. Half would be half and half is on the other. It's actually the street. So when they built that up there, I'm not sure exactly what happened, but they kind of platted it a little differently.
That was that you right away that we just had to record?
Sure. Yeah, and there was a change there that Planning Commissioner will remember that it actually wasn't, I don't know if it was actually a platted street. I don't think it was. So it wasn't being plowed. And, you know, he was getting stuck in the snow out there, so we had to make sure we took care of that, so. But yeah, so it would be 20, it'd be 24 foot off of the plat right away.
Sure. Okay.
We did think, when we looked at it, I mean, it's, there's a building next door to it. And just from eyeball, it's difficult to get a good measurement right now because of the snow. But I think we did feel like it would meet the character of the neighborhood. I mean, it's industrial or commercial in use. And also, that building looks to be probably a little bit closer to the street, too, than the actual 30-feet setback would be, so. And I don't know, it was, it's previous to this, so we don't know exactly what, how that would all went either. But we did think it was a relatively easy to see kind of a thing.
Any other questions? Mr. Marty, it would appear you are our public hearing this evening. Do you have anything you would like to share with us?
No, I mean, that's it in a nutshell. So, yeah, just the six foot would be appreciated if it's, if the Commission still would consider that, I guess. It would be helpful for the interior design part. Otherwise, you know, a five-foot could be workable, too. It's just making everything inside kind of tight, so.
Thank you, sir. With that said, I'll open and close the public hearing. In my opinion, and I hate variances for a variety of reasons, this is probably one of the few times where it is a very good solution for the problem at hand. And I guess if we need a six-foot variance, I don't see that wrecking havoc on anything compared to a five-foot variance. So I don't know what the city would need in terms of either updated paperwork or anything of that nature to notice six-foot variance.
Well, I think the recommendation tonight would be to move forward with a six-foot variance and then recommend that to the council. I don't think the council would need the updated paper. We would make a note on the paperwork, the application, that it was going to be six feet instead.
Well, those are my two cents. I guess I would encourage everyone else to share theirs.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the satellite view, it looks like the building across the street is much closer than the 30-feet, too. So it wouldn't be unusual to see, you know, an extension on this one and be a little bit closer.
Yeah, I mean, we do want, we want to make sure that we don't take previous decisions that may have been made into account necessarily. But I agree that, I mean, in the, our biggest key is to avoid anything that's going to create injury to the property. So if Mr. Marty would sell it in the future, we're not creating a problem for a future property owner. Like, if we were building into a drain and easement or something like that, it could be. We looked at it, because the sewer line runs along the backside of it, that creates a justification for variance that you need to have. Because really, in order to create, in order to issue a variance, you're supposed to have a, it isn't supposed to be that you just want to put the building there. It's got to be, it doesn't work because of X, Y, and Z that you can't control, so. No, I agree.
Any other comments? If not, I would look for a motion, please.
I will make the motion that we move forward with the variance, with the six-foot.
We have a motion to approve with a six-foot. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That would be our recommendation to the city council.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next up, we've got comprehensive plan demographics update.
And Brad's here tonight. Thanks, Brad, for being here. Appreciate it. Including your packets, you do have this PowerPoint presentation, which staff have reviewed. We are looking at doing some updates that the Planning Commission has spoken about earlier, obviously, last fall. We talked about this, kind of doing a mid-cycle comprehensive plan update, not a full-fledged, but just changing some of the stats based on our actual growth we've seen since 2017. So go ahead, Brad. Do you want to run through this?
Yeah, I will. So just to kind of set the stage for this, we updated the comprehensive plan, I think the approval of it was 2018, but the work we did was largely 2017 and a little bit of 2018. At that time, we were relying on kind of best available data, which was the descending census, which at that time was 2010 data. And then the interim stuff that the Census Department will put out, which was 2015, 2016 data. So the first thing that we're really looking at here is what can we learn from demographic trends and economic trends that will help inform how we might revisit some of the directions within the comprehensive plan? And that's the primary reason that we started looking at this. The other reason, though, is when we think about the future and we think about economic development opportunities and growth opportunities, how can the demographic trends and patterns that we see help inform kind of those directions? So those are really the two key things that we're looking at when we update demographic data. It is a snapshot based on survey information that people fill out from census information. And so it's really based on what people put on their census data and then how the Census Department extrapolates that information. So the first thing I just wanted to walk through, this is high-level planner tape. When I look through these, this data and as we pull this together, these are just my quick observations and summary. And then I'll walk through the slides that point at some of these findings. But as you go through this, I want you to be thinking about the same things as Planning Commissioners and members of the community and council members. You know, how does this information influence the direction in the future? And so a quick snapshot, since 2017, Casson has continued to grow and it's really exceeded the projections that we made back in 2017, not by a lot, but a little bit. One major observation is that Casson is really a family, or even a community. We have a lot of young families. And you'll see the large cohorts are kids under five and adults at 30 to 34, the families that have those kids. And so what does that mean for us in the next 10 to 15 years? Some observations, as you see that cohort move through the lifecycle, the kids are going to be in high school. So you can think about what high school kids do and what kind of things we need to be planning for. Parents will be buying cars and owning their largest homes to accommodate their largest family and accommodate the kids that now wants a car and needs a car. So there's income, there's money flowing through the economy for those expenditures. Parents will have some leisure time, in theory. Kids become more independent, so they're not watching kids. And so there's a little more leisure time for those adults in their midlife. There's demand for athletic fields and programs for the kids. There's also demand for a lot more arts and cultural programs, things for people to do. So all of those growth opportunities happen relative to these demographics that we move through. Another interesting one, and this one is a little bit of a challenge, high school kids, in theory, would be looking for jobs. And you'd have a stronger service sector labor pool as that demographic moves through and gets to the point where they're in that entry-level job, kind of part-time job size. With COVID and everything, that's kind of been thrown on its head. And so you'll hear me talk about, you know, data and trends relative to the pandemic and some of the social implications recently that has really thrown a niche or a hitch in things. And most of the data that I'm going to be presenting to you was really just collected pre-COVID and pre those major disruptions. Senior population is also growing up, not necessarily a new one, but in Casson, we're going to start to see those demographics be pretty large. And so what does that mean from a senior standpoint? Are there more healthcare needs? Is there an active senior living kind of twist in terms of how we do park planning? And we're seeing a huge uptick in things like pickleball and bocce ball and active trails. Senior housing options are going to continue to be a demand. We don't have a ton of those in Casson, but we might start to see pressure for more senior housing looking, as well as the senior center and programming and socializing opportunities for seniors. We see a greater number of households with greater incomes, and that creates potential discretionary spending. And again, so to think about economic growth and opportunities, one challenge is how do we keep that spending in Casson? Potentially for households with higher levels of education, that's something that's a trend that we're seeing. How can we leverage those opportunities to diversify or grow business and industry within? More workers are traveling further for work. That again is another thing, can we capture those? You always see signs in metro areas that say, if you live here, you'd be home by now. Well, the same kind of thing goes for if there were job opportunities here, you wouldn't be spending time commuting to Rochester. For example, I'm assuming that's where a lot of them are going. So can we keep more jobs locally, or do we want to keep more jobs locally? Do we want to be more of a veteran community or more of that year-round community? So is healthcare an opportunity, an economic opportunity in Casson? I think that's something to consider and what other opportunities might we be able to leverage based on some of these trends? Those are just some high-level, easy snapshots. I took all the easy ones for you. As we go through this, the things to think about as we prepare for kind of the future workshop, where we talked about land use and policy-related stuff. As we go through these slides, we'll be thinking about some of those. We'll talk about population, talk about the distribution of that population in terms of different characteristics, household growth, education, jobs, and commutes and housing types. Most of the data is census data. We do have some data that comes from the city of Casson more localized. So the COVID-19 pandemic started in 2020. Every demographer or economic person that looks at these trends and issues will start with a slide like this. We know COVID has really impacted things, and we know that things are very much different. And so a lot of the trends that we would normally think are basic are a little bit turned on their head. And so we'll continue to talk about that as we move through some of this data. Population, this is the growth 2020 numbers. We're 6,866 based on US Census data. The state demographer also estimates population, and they've estimated population in 2021 at 6,921. So we're continuing to see that steady increase in population growth. One of the things we often do is compare to other communities in the area. This was a selection of communities that we looked at in the Complan. And if we look at them again, you know, Casson is continuing to see a growth similar to what we see in some of the surrounding communities. So that's just a piece of information. We will project population growth in the comprehensive plan. The chart that you see at the right showed what we projected back in the comprehensive plan when we updated it in 2018, 2017. And you can see we projected a growth of 8,544. We use a variety of different methodologies, and we kind of pick the middle point of those. And so if we look at what actually happened, and like I said, the actual growth was a little bit higher than what we projected. If we take that and we said, let's change the projection, we get to that highlighted number of 8,963, which is the midpoint of the projection. If we were to replace that 2020 estimate with the actual number of 6,800 something. So you think of accommodating a little bit more growth, that's something for us to talk about. Do we want to change the projection to 2040 based on what happened in the census data? And the implication of that is then when we think about population growth and household growth and job growth, we think about land use planning. How much land do we need to make sure that we have available for growth? That's land that's in the annexation area, that's something where we project where and how that growth might go. And can we start to remove some of the barriers to enable that to growth to occur? So that's the importance of thinking about the population growth. We've talked about the cohorts where we see that major growth. The chart that you see here, the tan, lightest tan color or the peach color is 2020. So you can see those cohorts that we circled, the under-five, the 30 to 34, and then those senior, upper-level cohorts show where the most growth is happening. And it's a pretty significant shift from 2015 and 2000, particularly in the under-five demographic. Ian did reach out to look at the school's projection. This is an interesting piece of information to share with the school and to talk to the school about, you know, what are you planning for relative to growth? And are you seeing the same kind of demand with the younger generation entering the pre-K and the K kindergarten and elementary grades? So it's an interesting comparison to see what they're planning for versus what we're seeing in the census data. This one, just that Casson relative to Dodge County in Minnesota. Again, Casson's an outlier here with a lot more demographic in that younger family demographic. When we think about households, this is where we look at the household size. We're most interested in household size. We've got average family size because they produce that. The big difference is that not all households have families in them. Households are not necessarily related people, whereas families are the related entities. So we see larger numbers of persons per family and a little bit smaller in persons per household. If you look at that at a county or a state level, Casson's average household size is a little bit higher. And you see in 2000, we were 3, 2015, we were 2.63. And then all of a sudden, we reversed that and started to head back up. Most cities are seeing a continued decline in that household size. So that again, you know, is an indicator that Casson is unique in the sense that we've got a lot more kids. Median household income between 2015 and 2020, Casson, Dodge County, Minnesota, we all saw increases in household income. Dodge County saw a little bit more of an uptick. And if we looked at 2022, the median household income in Casson is 83,059. That's from a different set of data from ESRI, which is a GIS-based entity that produces a bunch of demographics and economic data. We see a large number of the households, if you look at the distribution of households in the community and lumped into economic income, see those cohorts with the most households are higher-income earning households. So that goes back to that notion that we might have a lot more discretionary income. How can we help keep some of that spending and growth in Casson? This is just additional household income information that kind of takes that numbers that we saw before and grasps them all. On the education side, one of the things we're seeing is more education in the community. In other words, more people that are age 25 and above that have some college or more degree. And so the, more households are in that associate, bachelor, graduate degree position. So that's an increase over 2,000. So that goes back to that bullet point of if we've got more educated people, can we look at opportunities for more entrepreneurialism and startup businesses? And is that an opportunity for the city to, what they call kind of economic gardening growth within? Jobs, we wrote, in the prior Complan, we had an entity called Buxton that did a lot of this demographic, looking at trade areas. The ESRI, this is the analyst, is the software we subscribe to. And one of the pieces that they provide is this tool to download demographics beyond Casson's border and look at more of a trade area. So you see we have 10-minute, 15-minute, 20-minute trade areas outside of Casson. And this provides a snapshot of the demographic in that trade area. This is often something that businesses will look at or investors will look at in terms of making key decisions about do we want to grow or start something in Casson? So this is that kind of information. Travel size, one of the census data information that you fill out is how you get to work. I circled a few things that are interesting. In 20, in year 2000 data, we had 67 people that responded they walked to work. And today, in 2020, we had 13. That's a pretty significant change. You know, I don't know what that necessarily means in a community like Casson, where somehow there was a group of people that were able to live closer to where their job was. It's just an interesting piece of information. Mean travel time to work, I think, is more compelling. I think this is probably an indicator of more people that are living in Casson than commute to Rochester. So we saw 19% of those folks that have a travel time, or 18.9 minutes versus 25.1 minutes. So it's a broader, a longer travel time, presumably people that are driving to Rochester. So this inflow-outflow is part of that demographic of where our work is coming from. We saw about 2,967 people that are eligible to work from Casson that leave Casson to go to work. And we saw 840 people come into the city for jobs. About 366 then were both living and working in Casson. So this outflow says, is there an opportunity for economic growth to try to capture some of this in Casson? So when we think about economic development strategy and diving into that, let's learn more about this 2,967. What kind of jobs are they searching for? And is there any kind of ability to capture some of those job opportunities in Casson? I'm skeptical of this one. This one shows healthcare and social assistance, all of a sudden, a major industry for jobs in Casson between 2014 and 2020. I don't know that this is accurate, so we need to look into this a little bit more. But this was, again, straight from the US Census data in that five-year American Community Survey. The reason I'm skeptical of it is when you look at this chart, and this comes in, Timmy left to remind me, this list of top employers comes from a bond report or something that Casson does. But if you look at these numbers, you see Casson Vanderbilt, 248 jobs. So I don't know that education really should be really low compared to healthcare when the number of jobs you see here in education. So I need to look into that a little bit more and see if we either missed up, missed up, allocated a number or if the data is an outlier. But you can see the jobs.
Brad, just one, there was a question here. Just hang on one second.
Would you pick up people working for the Mayo Clinic but doing it out of their homes here in Casson?
It could be.
Is that a piece of?
It could be, yes.
The only thing that came to mind, sir.
I mean, I don't know why that would have spiked, like, if you were taking into account COVID, maybe you'd see more stay-at-home. But this data should predate that, so that's a good, that's a good point, Brad.
Yep. And that's something that, that's a good example, Tom, of something I'll look into and see if that's maybe a reason.
They shouldn't be counted, though, because their employer isn't in Casson, right? Just because they work in Casson?
Yeah, unless they're working at the Mayo Clinic here, then you see that on here, like, there's 50 employees there. But if you're working at the, you know, just because you're here and you're working over there, I wouldn't think they'd be counted. But once again, we're using census data that also is sometimes problematic, so.
Yeah. So it's just, again, it's information, you know, it's not, I think that some of these things create questions to look into further as well as opportunities to look into further. And this one shows, from the census data, again, this just shows the number of jobs in Casson. And you can see a fairly steady growth if you just turn it, a growth pattern here. I wonder if we expected to see a decline in '25, '16, '17? But certainly, as we get into this, you might think we'll see a drop here because of the COVID time period. Interesting just to look at it. So, let's see here, housing. This data is straight from the census data as well. Again, I don't know how accurate a lot of this is. It's all a matter of how people report on their census files. But we see top to bottom, year 2000 to 2020, and the growth in housing structures. So this means structures with 20 or more units in them, or structures with 10 to 19 units in them. The big takeaway from this is really, we've seen a continued growth in single-family detached homes and not as much growth in the multifamily unit. That's going to change with the apartment buildings that we've seen demand and the structures that have been recently approved and starting to be constructed. And one of the things that we're hearing from the market people, the multifamily housing market appears to be staying. market appears to be staying pretty strong despite the economic challenges we're in right now. We see 20% renter, 80% owner occupied in terms of the housing supply, and that's pretty consistent with what we've historically been in Capson. And we have a pretty, in 2020, there was a pretty small vacancy rate. So that's, a lot of times you'll hear realtors and builders, building industry talking about vacancy rate of 5% to 6% is healthy. So you can think of this as being a pretty small vacancy rate, which affects prices upward. Cost burden, households, this is something that the census data keeps track of. Essentially, if you're spending more than 30% of your income on housing costs, meaning mortgages, taxes, utilities, those kinds of things, then you're deemed to be a cost burden. The thing that I note here that's interesting is to see that between 2015 and 2020, the rental housing has become much more affordable for this particular statistic. So that's an interesting observation while as owner-occupied homes with mortgages have become a little bit less attainable. This is just more information on housing costs, looking at Dodge County and some of the surrounding communities. Median home value, pretty consistent numbers, pretty stable numbers. Then we have a series of slides that are one of those pieces that comes out of that ESRI Business Analyst. They essentially will look at that trade area and they'll group a community's characteristics into one of these tapestries. They have like 67 different tapestries that they create. The interesting thing about them is that each one of those tapestries will give some characteristics of the type of households, their purchasing styles or their lifestyles. And those become things that you can look at to try to look, think about, how can we focus on a particular economic development opportunity or niche? Are any of these tapestries something that we can promote to business developments or economic development strategies? I'm not going to walk through these in detail. You can read through them at your leisure. But there's essentially four or five of them that they pulled out as key ones for Capson. And they follow pretty well with the demographics that we've kind of walked through. This is housing permit growth, and this is just single-family homes. So I don't have apartments and commercial growth in here. But it's interesting to look at this from a single-family housing development demand. This is most appropriate for planning permission because when you approve preliminary plaques and development applications, that's creating new supply out there. So this shows you kind of the absorption of that supply. And you can see there was a downturn here in the housing crash of the 2007, 89 period. And then we started to see a steady increase in growth following that. This is picking up the COVID time, and believe it or not, a lot of people saw COVID and the social issues that were going on and opportunities to move. And so we did see an uptick in a lot of communities with people looking to move, and Capson, I think, is one of the benefits of those. So you see that little spur here. And then all of a sudden, a realization that there might be some overbuying going on in the market, starting to change a little bit. Interstructureability, again, this is census data. So this reflects closely the permits that were there. This is the table that kind of shows that. We do have a relatively newer housing stock, so that's an important thing to keep in mind. And if we think about major, you know, when houses start to really age, you think that 20-year lifecycle where you're starting to replace windows and other things that maybe are damaged by hailstorms or whatnot, you can start to see neighborhoods and how they change based on that aging and the need for improvement. So sometimes this is interesting to map and look at. But I talked a little bit about lot inventory. Most of what you're seeing is housing units and demographic, population growth and job growth. But what about the land and the pipeline, the projects that we have coming out there? Based on recent plaques, we have roughly 110 vacant single-family lots in the city. So if you think, you know, we had 41 single-family homes, you know, simple math tells you, well, that's two years and those vacant lots are used up. So we have common acres, which are larger lots, single-family on the north side of town. Big ol' Boyd over on the west side has a mix of twin home, attached products, and single-family lots. Capson Meadows and Meadowbrook are both single-family developments. So we have a lot of single-family lots and a few twin home attached lots. But not a huge lot supply right now. We have the Mayo Apartments phase one under construction and a couple of the projects for multifamily housing that are sort of in the pipeline. At the end of last year, we had a number of, and this is moving over to the right-hand column, the project prospect, we had a number of sketch plan reviews that had single-family developments and single-family lots. You can see Englestad, 35 lots, South Pointe had 47, Thompson Edition had 34 apartment units and 12 townhomes. We had QuickTrip come in, we have Shuji Property, which is a variety of commercial and residential uses that could come out of that. The Marty Property in the Business Park area, commercial lots out to 14, and then a couple of different apartment projects would be the second phase of that Vale subdivision that we did. So we have quite a few things that are prospects. Of course, the market's going to dictate whether they move forward or not. So we averaged 642 single-family home permits per meter, 14 townhome permits, all in 2021 and 2022. One apartment building, 17 major factor homes. Most of those were replaced or moved into an existing, maybe existing home park. And then 18 new commercial or institutional building projects. So all of that kind of plays into this understanding of supply and inventory and why it's important for us to think about that when we do land use planning and we look at updating or modifying the future land use plan as a comprehensive plan. This diagram is from the Minneapolis Realtors Association, and it's one that they talk about a seller's market, a buyer's market, or a balance market. We want to be over here in this balance market. And this is based on houses on the market for sale, so existing built homes that are for sale, not the lot inventory. And so, you know, seller's market is if you have five months' supply, a buyer's market is if you have more than six months' supply. We want to be in that balance. And so we need to think about the same thing when it comes to lot inventory. How many lots do we have out there that are available, services to them, streets to them, and on the market? If we don't have a lot of lots on the market, then it's a seller's market and prices are affected. If we have too many, then it's a buyer's market and prices are affected. So we want to think about a land use, supply and demand exercise that creates as much as we can that balance and to the extent that we can guide development, land use in the right way and make sure that we have proper annexation in place and zoning and guidance in place so that it makes it clear where that goes. That's what we want to try to do. And we're never going to get it perfect. We're never going to get it exactly right. We always have to maintain some flexibility. And so responding to projects that come up that maybe aren't the right color or aren't in the annexation boundary, we're always going to handle it. But all of this played into that land use discussion, which we'll have at a future meeting. So three factors driving everything, I would say, not just COVID, but any unexpected issue that comes up. The federal government and interest rates affecting how people are able to make public improvements and borrow money, and that pulls supply and demand. Those are three things that really affect how we do land use planning. So I know that was a lot. Hopefully, you've got time to kind of spin through these and do your own Google research and play around with what these things mean. And at a future meeting, we'll come back with some land use projections and start to talk about land use and supply and demand. So without pause, is there any questions or discussion items people would like to throw out there?
One thing.
Or Zach has anything to add?
I was just going to add, Brad, you know, going back to that third, the last slide there, you got the lot inventory. Ian, one thing to keep in mind is that, you know, if you look at the balance, you're saying, well, we need to have X number of lots. So one thing to keep in mind would be common acres, which is a little bit different style subdivision lots, too. So, you know, we've got roughly 110 lots. Forty of those lots are two-acre or one-and-a-half acre parcels that we do think that there's a little bit more limited buyer pool there than there would be even for a regular single-family home. You know, most of our single-family homes, the lots are between a fifth and a quarter of an acre now. You know, you might have a .21 or a .25. That's about the, so about four per acre out there, you know, you've got a much larger subdivision. So to a certain extent, you have to almost keep those sort of on one burner and then the rest of them on another burner. Kind of understand that we basically have a good one-year, one-and-a-half-year supply of lots right now. The nice thing is that looking at the projected projects, you can see that we've kind of got slotted in there, numbers that would probably be each, you know, so you basically have three years' worth of lots that are potential without having to worry about some annexations. Because the annexations for Englestad and for South Pointe have already been done. So those are just the things to keep in mind, I guess. Otherwise, like Brad said, I mean, this is a lot of data to take in. So we'll have this provided for you. You should have a copy of it now, you can read through it, kind of contemplate it a little bit. If there's any questions, you know, write it up, and then we'll be talking about it at some more of our meetings for sure, so.
Any questions?
I think Brad's got a sheet up there. If there are any questions for him tonight, he can write them up and he'll stick them on them. Otherwise, if there's nothing else, we can, we can just think about it a little bit more.
A lot of data.
There's a lot of data. And I don't know, I mean, I think, you know, we all live in town or close to town. Anyone who lives in town kind of realizes, you know, the school's a big driver, family sizes are larger, especially in our newer subdivisions. You know, I know in my subdivision, it's all families, you know, and I live on the northeast by the school. So, I mean, and most of them have got more than two kids, a lot of them have got three kids. So that's pretty standard, I think, is three kids. So, you know, we talk about, I know Ian and I talk about it, you know, what can we do in terms of business development also to try and broaden the tax base? And, you know, we've talked about different businesses that are potentials for the community. So we do look at it from an economic development standpoint as well, so.
Well, getting some insight from the school would be helpful as well. I mean, if you've got as many young kids that are not quite school-aged.
You know, we did contact, we did let the, we did ask the school for some of their data, and it was a little different, it was a little, they're guiding very conservatively with their projections, which is probably not a bad thing for them because it's all, for them, it's all budgets.
Yeah.
Because every single kid they get is worth $10,000 from the state of Minnesota. So, I mean, you know, and Mark's a business-type guy, you know, for good or for bad, he's being pretty conservative on his numbers. I still think that they're probably going to, it's probably going to go up a little bit sooner, a little bit higher. But it'll be interesting to see what the, what that actually becomes. But, so I know Bob Hayes, you've been in contact with him. We've had their numbers for the next, is it five years or 10?
I believe it's five.
And, I mean, they're basically looking at a flat enrollment, which seems unrealistic. But at the same time, you know, it'd be interesting to see because, you know, I hear, okay, flat enrollment from the school, but also, well, we need more buildings or we need more facilities. And you can't really do it both ways. But I think that that tends to be sort of a, sometimes like, oh, we need a new building. I mean, and we've talked about it like with Byron. You know, with the school, with the school choice, with open enrollment, I mean, you have to be careful, too, because if you overbuild, it doesn't take much for people to move. I mean, if something in the school district happens, I mean, Hayfield has had a rough year. They may lose some kids this year. It's going to hurt their projections just because, you know, bad PR, it's easy to move to Capson or Mannerville or one of these other, you know, school districts. So, Ian, you had a point.
Well, could part of their flat enrollment is when kids get into their senior year, they do more PSEO and the school loses them as a student, per se.
Yeah, I don't know if that's what works exactly with PSEO. I think you still get to count them as a, I think you still get to count them as a pupil.
Well, I don't know, because if they go and they have to send that money to them to go to college, so that's lost.
It's a good question. I mean, that's something to check into. Would you check into, put that down?
Yeah, I don't know if that counts, but that money they would get paid for them to take their post-secondary.
There probably are a lot of kids that are doing that. I know it's a well-used program here in a lot of the suburban school districts, so.
That could be.
So, I mean, that's definitely something we could check into, though.
How exactly is this structured?
Where do kids in Capson, where do kids in Capson go? College courses?
I'm sure they go RCTC or Winona. Yeah, RCTC, Winona would be the big two, probably.
Majority of it's online, but they leave the school grounds. But they're doing it via online.
I know my kid did it during COVID, she had to go to class. She had to go to.
My daughter's doing it right now. She's taken three courses, three classes in Rochester. As long as her homework's done by the deadline.
I mean, that's a good question to ask and see if there's other reasons they're looking at.
That's not part-time at the school, though? That's considered full-time, is three courses?
She goes, she's at school for two classes at high school.
So does the school get part of the funding then?
She gets then whatever she's there, and then the other funding goes to the.
So you think it's shared between the?
So that's why I'm wondering if that counts as.
No, I mean, I think that's a really good question. And I hadn't thought of it, PSEO, but it's possible that that's one of the reasons they're flat. Because I'm sure they probably have at least 50% of the kids in the senior class that are taking at least one class online or something like that. With RCTC being so close and now they've got the nursing program and some of the other really attractive programs for the kids, I could see that being a definite possibility.
It's open to juniors, too, isn't it? Both juniors.
I think it is, yeah.
I think so, yes. It's not as common, but a lot of them like to have that.
I mean, I know some high schools actually give credit for the classes you're taking at college, too. They.
Yeah. In your sophomore year, you can take sophomore and junior and senior. You can also take college courses at the high school, but you stay at there and you're taking high school courses and the, it's the same teacher, they just, it's a professor that runs it.
Sure. Well, I think we can definitely look into that and see what the relationship is there. Any other questions for Brad tonight on the demographics? Otherwise, we're going to keep working on it. We'll be letting the council know. So the goal, I think, is for us to have this conversation this spring, to have kind of an update produced in the fall for the comp plan. So it'll kind of be the mid-cycle of the comp plan, five years in.
That was our slideshow, I assume?
Yes, sure.
Next up, paved lot ordinance. You've got a discussion to be had there.
Well, I think that, I'll let Ian lead this conversation, but including your package, you do have some information on the paving. One thing we run onto, and I know the city engineer has sort of remonstrated with the staff a little bit about it in terms of maybe taking a little harder line when it comes to requiring the paving lots. I mean, you know, you have an example like ANA, for example, where they meet, maybe meet the minimum criteria, but they have a lot of surface that's not paved where they store things at. And actually, I think the catalyst for this was Mr. Marty's second building, not the one that was approved tonight, so not his current building, but he's looking at building a second building. In the initial submittal for that lot, that's the lot to the west of his current building, he didn't have, actually have any paved surface at all. It was just all gravel. And, you know, based on the code, you've got that included in there. You know, it's very clear, "All driveways and areas intended to be utilized for parking spaces shall be constructed by two must asphalt, concrete, or pavers. Such servicing shall be approved by a city engineer and maintained and could repair." So I think what Ian's looking for is to sort of step up enforcement on that. And, you know, he's going to be the hard hand of the law here. Yeah.
Not that.
No, go ahead.
Does the city, does the city now have all of their properties paved? Because when this was brought up initially, we couldn't enforce it because we had parked properties that weren't paved.
I would say this, any properties that the city has that are intended for parking are paved.
Okay.
Now, for a good example would be the city owns the lot behind the Legion. The Legion uses it for parking. The city doesn't use it for parking.
Right.
So I think you just make a distinction there.
Well, the biggest thing was, was like the Lions Park was not paved. And that was why we couldn't really enforce it because we, so I want to make sure we follow it before we can move forward to.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good point. I think, you know, we, there aren't the, I mean, you know, Library Parking Lot was doubled last year, Lions Park was paved. The only one that I can think of off the top of my head would probably be the Capson Meadows Park that's not paved. Other than that, I think that they're all paved now. And that one was one that was, SL Contracting was supposed to pave, but they haven't done that, so.
Sure. So why do we want to force people to pave?
Dust control.
Dust control, stormwater, stormwater runoff is a huge issue, causes issues, and then the, and the city engineer could explain it better, but there's a variety of criteria. And it's part of our city code, so, you know.
Well, right, so I'm questioning the code, is why, so it's because we're worried about the gravel and the dirt from a gravel driveway and parking space running off into the.
Stormwater.
Into the big one, I know, the surging areas.
Plus, part of it, too, is if, as soon as it dries out and you get a dust windstorm coming through and you have adjacent properties, now all that dust is on their properties or in their house. So they can't have their windows open in the summer if they wanted them. So we're trying to make it a livable spot for, if you want your windows open, you're going to have them open. So that's why there's, because that was a big problem. And you see it there at Cunningham's. That problem. And you see it there at Cunningham's, with that property being gravel.
Right.
There is properties next to it that have complained about that.
Right. Does this apply to all properties in the city or just commercial?
All city limits.
So this would force me to pave my driveway?
I think all driveways and areas intended, I mean, take it for what it's worth, it says standard for all residential districts, commercial districts, and I want, so industrial districts.
Because my driveway's gravel, so what you're saying is you forced me to pave my driveway?
Well, and that's part of the reason we're bringing it up tonight is because, you know, Ian's going to start looking at this and he wants to know, you know, where we want to go with it, because once we start doing that, um-
I mean, there's, there's certainly things other than, you know, kind of dusty gravel, different aggregates that aren't going to be dusty, right? That would be probably far cheaper than asphalt or concrete.
Well, what's an example, I guess?
Huh?
Example?
Like inch and a half rock or whatever, I got a lot of inch and a half rock in my driveway.
I don't know, I think that would still fall under, I mean, I guess part of it is if you looked a little further down the code here, is where it talks about dust-free and the commissioners will remember this, we've run into this before with, especially with the storage units out to the southeast. And that's an area that, in between the units should have been paved. Now, we've taken a little bit, once again, a little bit lighter hand on that, but when they made their submittal, they knew they were supposed to pave that, they built them, they have never done it. And they, while they have said they were going to do it, they haven't, and what, you know, what kind of catalyst do you have to force that to happen now, you know? So, I mean, I'm not saying that, you know, to your point, Paul, I mean, if we're not going to enforce it, then maybe it's time to look at the code and change the code. Yes, go ahead, Brad.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the implementation of this is not going out and making people who have a current gravel driveway and have always had a gravel driveway pave their gravel driveway, but if people are proposing improvements or expansions or whatnot, then part of their process would be bringing their property up to code. Is that fair?
No, I think that's fair. And like you said, that's part of the catalyst for us was when Mr. Marty submitted a project, it was, well, you know, we noticed it then more than we would in some other cases. Like, I'm not going on your driveway and, I mean, once you love to just have a nice two minutes asphalt driveway, wouldn't that look really nice, Paul? I mean, you could probably get a discount last year when, you know, when they were paving up there, I bet.
And when it, this all goes back to the city's ordinances, if we enforce them, it's going to go back to if somebody has a complaint, a joint, you know.
You know, generally, it is complaint-driven. So, I mean, that, you know, like I said, I don't know. Ian, like I said, he's hardcore, he loves to go out and know. No, we really don't like to get, we get complaints from people and they say, well, why isn't the city enforcing its code? And that's probably one of the biggest things, you know, and if you go on Facebook, somebody will always chime in whenever something happens. Oh, the city doesn't even enforce the code, ah, you know, whether it's weeds or, you know, we try not to get more involved than we have to because I don't like to yell that by people any more than anybody else does, but, so, I mean, we want to bring it to you because right now, I would say we're probably not enforcing this. The question is, do we start enforcing it more or do we look at changing the code? I think in the case of Mr. Marty, like, there needs to be paved parking area for a building if it's going to be a commercial, you know, building. You know, it isn't even a, it's not even a, like a warehouse or something like that. This is literally like, there are going to be people coming and going. And part of it, once again, comes down to setting the precedent for a future owner. You know, if he's going to build it and he sells it to somebody else down the line and it gets rutted up and it gets muddied up, then we're going to have a problem. Like, maybe right away, it's going to be fine, 10 years from now, now we're putting that burden on the new owner, so. Brad, was there anything else you wanted to add to this or Ian? Must not.
Something I need to add.
Okay. Ian, anything else you had a question on? I guess Ian's just looking for direction from the planning and zoning, whether we want to look at revising this or if we want to start cracking down on, I mean, because it's going to be spring, it's going to be mucky, we're going to hear, we're going to get the calls, you know, and that's kind of where he's at, isn't it, Ian? He's looking forward to it a lot, so.
Well, I'm concerned about the cost issue, I know it's pretty expensive to, you know, pave your entire parking area, but I believe the EDA's facade improvement program, I believe, would be, could work if someone wanted to use that to help pay their, pay to pave their parking area. Could be an option.
So help me understand, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but, you know, we've got Mr. Wilker out here on Dump Road, who started building without a building permit, stopped building. So if he were to come back and get a building permit and finish that structure, given the nature of his business, what would be the recommendation made on what needs to be paved out there? I mean, are you talking about basically the entire lot or just where people are-
No, I think what I mean, the way I read it here is any area that's intended for parking. So, I mean, for example, in the case of Mr. Marty's lot, or even, like I said, ANA, you go over to ANA, you've got the main building, you've got the area in front where people park, they go inside, that's the area that we're mostly concerned with. It's not the storage lot.
Okay, now, I'm really not trying to be confrontational.
Sure, well, I appreciate that.
But I would assume Paul isn't parking in his driveway, he's parking in a garage?
Most of them.
So-
But not all of them.
I don't have enough garage spaces.
Again, I'm not trying to pick on you. So does he have to pave his driveway or just where he's parking a vehicle?
It's a great question. And you're paying for it, so I guess you get to interpret the code for it.
And if we're only paving parking, that doesn't really take care of dust control because then there's, still allows unpaved areas that could be dusty.
That's true.
Well, so, section three, sub A, says all driveways and areas intended to be utilized for parking spaces shall be constructed. So it says all driveways and parking areas, right in our code. So it's all driveways and areas intended for parking.
I mean, to that-
That's pretty standard code language, by the way.
And we've done that with any new house? I mean, we don't go back to old houses. Because yours isn't the old and gravel driveway in town. And we would never go back and say you have to pave your driveway, it's, every new house that comes is all paved. But I think we need to look at the definitions, too, because there's no definition for paving and the hard cover says see impervious surface, and I think I added the impervious surface to your packets, too.
Yeah.
And that actually includes gravel.
Gravel aggregate and other surfaces.
Here it says your driveways have to be asphalt, concrete, or pavers.
Right. So it's very well laid out what they, what they want you to use. For the rest of your lot, you could say that that's a hard surface, you could make a justification that gravel could be included. And I think that's kind of the interpretation that we've taken with, for example, ANA's, their storage lots.
There's probably an argument to be had about any new development or any updates to existing development. If you're tearing down your garage, rebuilding your garage, that would be the time to report it, yeah.
I'd probably see it as, you know, the gateway it would go through would be, is the intensity of use on the site increasing? Whether that be by an addition to the building, so you're increasing intensity of use, or it's a change of use on the site, then that could potentially trigger this compliance with this section.
What do you do, so you have the driveway, what do you do when all of a sudden your neighbors complain because of the dust? How do you enforce, if you're going to say we're not doing driveways? But then you have neighbors now that can't open their windows because the wind blows across there, you know what I mean?
What do they spray on gravel roads?
Sodium chloride.
Is that a middle-of-the-road solution?
Maybe. I'm just throwing that one out there, that's going to be what if?
Yeah. Well, chances are-
I mean, the odds are pretty slim.
Yeah, I know. Chances are, if you're living next to somebody with a gravel driveway and you move there, you move to that-
True.
Challenge. So you knew about it before you bought the property.
True, but-
Yeah, I know.
Tell the people to go back to the racetrack.
Yeah, I mean, you can't move next to a racetrack and complain about the noise, you know, it doesn't-
They told you they were never going to use it again for racing, you can't.
In Tom's little world of-
I live over there, so I know all about that.
In Tom's little world of common sense, I don't know how far that argument-
Because even, even when you bring that up, the fairground has its fair share of gravel.
Yeah, it does.
And do they park out? No, it's a drive-out.
We couldn't enforce that, though, because it's not in the city, right?
Yeah, it's county property.
But I'm just saying, that is another, with the residential homes, that is going to become a problem down the road if that becomes a dust.
It sounds horrible, it sounds a little heavy-handed, I guess you start with the sodium chloride conversation and say, hey, you know, here are your options, we can either, you know, enforce, you know, a code if you ever want to do any work out there, or you can start being a better neighbor and doing things such as this to control your, and hopefully that's a reasonable position for the-
Yeah, and I think, I mean, Ian's just looking for, you know, how do we, you know, handle this? And I think what I'm hearing is that for new construction, we need to stick to the letter of the law, you know, encouraging people who, you know, don't fit that criteria to take other options to try and mitigate it, I mean, which is kind of what we have been doing. But I know that he was looking for feedback in terms of, once he starts getting calls or people saying, well, why are you making us do that? I mean, and I mean, Mr. Marty's a responsible builder, I'm sure if we say, hey, you need to put parking lots in, you know, he'll do what he needs to do. But, and I know the one that the commission, that I'm most familiar with, is at the storage units, because we did deal with that and we've dealt with it a couple times, you know, and I'm not saying the whole lot needed to be paved, but the sections between the stalls really just should have been done. Because you've got cars driving through there all the time and, so, I mean, water storage is a big, that's a big area, too. It's not just like Paul's driveway, you know, it's going to affect his lot mostly, it's not going to affect me or anybody else, but if anybody ever builds east of that storage unit thing, you're going to have, you know, you're going to have a dust storm. So, anyway, Ian, does that give you what you need for right now? Okay, awesome.
And the storage unit was notified when they built to have it done.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we can go back and remind them.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to remind them each summer, I know we've sent them at least one letter, I know Linda was following up on that last year.
Maybe, maybe we have to go farther with it than just a friendly letter.
Well, I think that's the whole-
I guess the question is how do you do that?
Is there a conditional use permit on that property?
I think there is, isn't there?
I think it was, I thought that was one of the-
And that's where we got into it with Mr. Wilker. We asked, we had the conditional use permit into a lawsuit that took two years.
It's been a year since we've had one.
Yeah, I guess we'll do it again. Yeah, I got out of that one, I got out of that one. All right, I think that's all we needed, though, so. Thank you very much for tonight, at least.
Bring it up again.
Yeah, if we have issues, we certainly will.
So do we kind of agree that if it is, in its condition it is now, it's kind of grandfathered in, per se, unless there's issues with it?
Unless there's issues, or I think what I've heard is, you know, if there's a change in use or-